I would ask the council clerk to be a roll call, please.
Good evening, everyone. All right, we'll start with council member Kelly.
Present.
Council member Miller.
Here.
Council member Lane.
Here.
Council member Mendoza.
Here.
Council member Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Croft.
Here. Let's go on to the second item, the action items. Item A is public hearing and consideration of possible action to adopt resolution number eighteen one one two six, adopting a final budget for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and proposed expenditure limitation for the same year in the amount of twenty-four million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred. Mr. Duffy, do you have a presentation?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a very long presentation. Would you like me to go through it real quick for you?
Please.
Okay.
We really mean it this time?
Yes.
This is the jet.
This is the jet, yeah.
The longer it goes, the more the no's come out.
Right. It'll be short, sir, I promise. So, this evening, it's the final adoption of our fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget. We're adopting a budget for twenty-four million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, about a six percent increase over last year's budget. Each of the funds, what we're essentially doing this year is, we started the year, and I'll show you the general fund, and then we've pretty much done with all the others, but we started the year with five point seven million dollars in the general fund. We've run revenues, spent money, and we're going to end the year with six, six million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. So what we've done next, this budget year, is we're going to spend some of that overage next budget year, but we're still going to be in fiscal year nineteen at five million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, or about five million eight, essentially just a little bit better where we started this current budget year. That goes back to our conservative approach of not spending the money primarily from the increased construction receipts that we've been receiving until we have it in the bank. So we're going to spend a little more, we're planning on bringing in, but we actually collected it last fiscal year. Each of the funds, these are the major fund carryover balances, and as you can see, and this is really what I was saying, is we're going to carry over seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, we're going to spend six hundred and ninety-nine in the general fund. The HERF, we're carrying over a hundred and forty-seven, we're going to spend three forty-five. Water, those funds are about the same, that were just really at break even, and I would project fiscal year eighteen, nineteen for water and sewer are going to be break even just with the increased buy-in fees and construction, but I didn't project a large increase, or really any increase in construction activity next, this fiscal, fiscal year eighteen and nineteen, just to be conservative. And some of the things we're doing is we pay down the PSPRS liability, we've got some election costs, we're buying a police officer body cameras, and actually, those are actually in, they're getting to start installing them. We have a hundred and twenty-five for memory park restrooms, we've reduced the HERF overhead basically down to zero, so the general fund is no longer burdening the HERF fund with any admin costs, and that's taken us about three years to get to this point that we can do that. And what that means is more money's going to the roads, more money on the roads. We've got a document management project, which we'll bring to you in August to approve, and just a few other small miscellaneous projects. In HERF, we have about a hundred and twenty-one thousand budgeted for, well, a hundred and fifty-five budgeted for an equipment purchase, which we'll bring to council when they're ready to bring it to you. We have in roads, two hundred and fifty in road materials, about a hundred and fifty in Chips Hill projects, and another fifty for the Highway eighty-nine maintenance, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar improvement over where we were last year at this time. We also did, here that we're going to receive a little bit more HERF money, I haven't confirmed exactly what that is, but it's, at least, we're getting a little more HERF funds this next year. We have the memory park expansion, the old home manor master plan, and then new lights for the ball field, which should be coming to the council in early August to get those installed. We have a new building at the water and sewer plant, we've actually split that between the two departments, a hundred each. We put in a hundred and fifty for a well upgrade, some sewer line maintenance, starting to clean out our sewer lines, and we're going to see how much we can do each year, and a hundred and twenty for the drying beds construction. We've, other things, we have a new bailiff position, which is being funded by the court improvement fund, so basically, the court's funding this position themselves, and we have a three hundred and twenty-five thousand CDBG grant to do some paving up in Chino Meadows Five. And with that, that's all I have.
Questions?
Not too bad, huh, Jack? Not too bad?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm good. Okay, I need a motion to open this item up for public hearing.
Mayor Croft.
Okay, make a motion to open this up to public hearing.
His mic.
Anyone out in the public to speak to our budget?
Your mic's not on.
Your mic's not on.
Sorry. I'm hating tonight.
Are you hiding? No hiding alive.
Okay, let me try that again. I'm going to make a motion. Does anybody out in the public would like to come up and speak to our budget? Hearing none, I'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion from the council?
No.
I'm asking for a motion to approve.
Okay. Whoa, okay. So, excuse me, let me get over here. So we'll make a, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number eighteen dash eleven twenty-six, adopting a final budget and proposed expenditure limitation for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen in the amount of twenty-four million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Let's go on to item B, public hearing and consideration of possible action to adopt resolution number eighteen eleven twenty-five, adopting the statements, estimates of expenses of the Town of Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement Districts for the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, which shall constitute the budget of the district for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Mr. Duffy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This is for the Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement District, which is actually made up of three separate little districts, all up in the Bright Star area. We do this every year, so basically, we will now, the county will now levy the, all the people in the district, essentially a property tax, or through their property taxes, they remit the money to us, and then we write the check to APS to pay for the streetlights. These are the three districts, and you can see that the amounts stay about two thousand and one thousand for the other two, and it's remarkable, they're within fifteen dollars of each other. I think the net effect, at the end of the year, we're down sixty-nine dollars, so it's not even worth adjusting at this point in time. So, that's all there is.
Questions?
I don't have any questions.
I'd like to, a motion to open this up for hearing.
Okay, make a motion to open public hearing for this consideration.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're in a public hearing, anybody have any comments on our discussion on the Chino, Chino, Town of Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement District?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Jamie reminded us that we need to approve the resolution as corrected with the amended attachment to it that we left under notice.
Got that?
Yep.
Okay, let's make a motion to close the hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to close the hearing?
Hearing is closed, let's go on for a motion for the...
You want a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
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 I'll see you guys later. You know we need you. Okay, now let's get, have a motion.
I just want to make sure that I'm, so we just have to include exhibit A?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number eighteen dash eleven twenty-five, approving the statements and estimates of expense for the Town of Chino Valley Street Lighting Improvement District for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen, which shall constitute the budgets of the districts for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, including exhibit A.
Is there a second? I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, that closes the action items for this evening. Now we're going to go on to the study session items. Study session A is presentation and discussion regarding the two thousand seventeen Road Two North Traffic Impact Study prepared by DOWL Engineering, Mr. Marbury, who is our Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Let me pull up the, okay, if we want to go through this, the, want to bring to you the results of a, a study that we commissioned for Dow Engineering to complete. Couple of years ago, they did a study for the Road Two North area, all the way from one east to one west, to look at the impact, the total impact of all the planned, existing and planned development in that area, since it's a fairly congested area of the town. So what we did is, with some of the new development coming in, we had them modify that study to include what would have been the, the possible development of Brook Apartments and the other apartments. So, the developments that were analyzed along Two North include Heritage Farm, which I can show you in a future slide, it's the, the cows across from the Del Rio School, and it's a little, little easy way to say that, but that's a good idea where that property is. And then Hawks Nest Estates is a big property behind the Walgreens area. Heritage Place is a commercial subdivision on the south side of Two North, and then Brook Apartments is immediately south of Heritage Place. There is also an apartment complex in the original study behind the Safeway on the east side of town that was considered. So what we looked at is the intersection level of service for the roadway improvements, and what recommendations we would need for that. This shows some of the existing development here, we've got the strip mall with the Skillets and various other places of business on the southwest corner, you've got Walgreens, Safeway, Taco Bell, Post Office, and many other businesses right in this one intersection, so it's a, it's a pretty congested area. And let me get to the existing roadway, this is the big table, but it's basically, we've got two-lane roads, except for Highway eighty-nine, which is five lanes if you include the center turn lane. And when you see the, the TWL, TL, I may refer to that as a Tweedle, that's a two-way left turn lane. So, just an easy way to say that. So here's what the typical road section is along Two North, it's just simply two twelve-foot lanes with whatever ditch we can, can get in there. Right-of-way is somewhat limited, we do show right-of-way out here, but it varies throughout, and some of the existing roadway is actually, we need to, at some point, perfect that right-of-way. Some of the property is actually out into the street itself, depending on how old that property is. Here's just a blow-up of the intersection of Highway eighty-nine and Road Two South to give you a better view of the intersection there with some of the property lines. These yellow lines are the property lines from the tax map that we've got. And this is a little tighter, so you can see the, one thing I want to note that will come up later is this property line on the southwest corner is actually into that parking lot area now. But we'll talk about that in a minute, so just remember that little note. Existing traffic volumes, again, a lot of numbers that only us engineers care about mostly. The, the big numbers to think about are Highway eighty-nine, and this is, these numbers, I think, are actually higher on eighty-nine. I've heard the numbers are approaching twenty-seven thousand cars a day at this time. Road Two North, you're looking west of the highway, about two thousand cars a day, and east of the highway, about six thousand cars a day. So, and then we've got some other roads, like Perkinsville, for example, is about two thousand cars a day as well. The level of service, when engineers talk about that, a C is what we, we don't want to go below a C level of service when we design for things, and all the existings are either A, Bs, or Cs, so that would be acceptable to an engineer, even though C's not that great, but it's still acceptable. And again, these are kind of engineering terms, and they've got delays that the engineers use to determine those. And we've looked at, at the Walgreens, when you see Road Two North and Walgreens and the strip mall, those are the driveway entrances there. So here's some of the developments that I was talking about, we've got, the Hawks Nest is behind the Walgreens, and it's, I think, ninety acres, and then immediately to the west is the Heritage Farm, which could be a potential development. To the south is Heritage Place, which is a commercial subdivision, and immediately south was the, the Brook Apartments, and the Village North Apartments was proposed at one point behind Safeway. And none of these, as far as I know, have active developments at this point, but they were proposed, and they come and go, so we don't have any actual plans or improvement plans for any of these at this time. So let me go. This kind of shows just some of the projected numbers from each development that would be in there that Dow used to see what their numbers are for the future improvements. I do want to note that it's actually kind of interesting that Heritage Place has a pretty big generation number compared to the sum of the others, but that's, when you think of a commercial subdivision with a lot of businesses in there, that kind of makes sense. And these are the future level of services if we don't do anything. So you'll see some of these As and Bs goes to Ds and Cs, and the Safeway driveways go to a failing and F level of service, so we're going to need to do something to improve things as the traffic increases there. It's just a matter of when and what time. So before I get to the recommendations that they had, I wanted to give you some of the rules of thumbs that, that we go through. When you look at traffic numbers for, like, a local neighborhood street, you're looking at usually less than a thousand cars a day. More than that, it starts becoming uncomfortable. For a two-lane road, you really want to stay under ten thousand cars a day, and then you want to add that center turn lane to those two lanes, and that'll get you fifteen to twenty thousand, we say eighteen thousand or so, for a three-lane, and then above that, you start going into your five-lane roads, or your four-lane with a divided raised median. Some other considerations at intersections, when you get over three hundred vehicles an hour in your peak hour, is when you want to add that second turn lane to turn left. And it varies depending on the road, but a rule of thumb for adding a dedicated right lane is about a hundred and twenty cars an hour in the peak hour. So what their recommendations were is, basically, to provide left turn lanes for each of these developments, and what that does, when you start adding them together, is you're looking at a, a three-lane road section with two, a lane in each direction plus a center turn lane between one east and one west is the best solution to eventually build this road out to. And with that, we, we think that that could probably handle any of the traffic this road puts on it, up to that eighteen thousand vehicles a day number. They also recommended providing bicycle lanes in this area for bicycles, and sidewalks on both sides of the street to handle the pedestrian traffic. And they wanted to double-check things like sight distance at the driveways and in the developments. And then, at the intersection of Two North, we would, uh... Let me see what I've got, because basically, what it boils down to, oh, this is at the intersections at, at one east and one west. What you've got is, you'll have a three-lane roadway coming into a two-lane roadway, so you, those will turn into left turn lanes, or they said you could spend more money and put roundabouts at those intersections, so that's what that boils down to. And then you look at SR eighty-nine, that's what I was trying to think about, was, at that intersection, at some point, for westbound eighty-nine coming from Road One West, you'll need to eventually put in a dedicated right turn lane to get, I'm sorry, eastbound, so coming from the west, turning right to head towards Prescott, you'll need to put in a right turn lane there when the traffic warrants it. It depends on how many developments come in, and, and the timing of those as to when that warrant would take place, so they just recommend monitoring the traffic, and then update the striping, and then re-time the intersection as we need to going throughout the years, and that would be coordinating with ADOT because they control that intersection, so anything at that intersection would be in coordination with ADOT and their traffic engineers to, to make sure everything goes the way it should. And then the, the other recommendations on the right side are just typical things you look at, is trying to reduce the clear zone, get the power poles away from the road, that sort of thing, and to get the turn radiuses squared away, so things like school buses can make the turns. That's been an issue, especially at Two North and One West, trying to make that turn. So here's the level of service, if you do make the improvements, and everything goes to As and Bs and Cs, except for the entrances at the Safeway Shopping Center, they couldn't find a solution to make those better. And that's mainly because of the traffic, when you stop the light, traffic at the light, it'll back up in front of those driveways, and then people can't get out of those driveways, so that's probably going to be an issue for as long as we can think about it, as long as traffic's there. It's just going to be tough to get out onto Two North from Safeway. Some of the typical roadways we look at, this is our typical roadway section per our code. For the UDO is a forty-two-foot roadway section with curb and gutter and five-foot sidewalks on each side. So that's what we look to have the developers improve their side of the road to, so they look to improve from the center line towards their side to get to this section. What the traffic study recommends is actually another couple feet of pavement, and you'll, you actually narrow up the, the traffic lanes and provide the bike lanes in that. So, that's the main difference, is adding the bike lanes in there from what they recommend to what our code calls for. An alternate section I would like to propose that they didn't talk about is, basically, keep the same roadway section per our code, but you can also detach a ten-foot multi-use pathway, probably on one side of the street, you can even add a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. But that would tie in with the two thousand seven traffic study that calls for a trail system to connect all the way from Peavine to Del Rio School along Two North. And it would also do the same thing on Perkinsville and create a trail system throughout the town. So that's an alternate to maybe keep in mind. Here's what some of the intersections look like. This is what Two North and One West, in a perfect world, would look like when you do all these improvements, you come in from Highway eighty-nine and have a turn lane, turn lanes at One West and Two North, and provide the handicap ramps. The red is the sidewalks and the handicap ramps, and then the traffic striping. So, and this would be Highway eighty-nine coming out, and the big kicker here is to, to look at the right turn lane coming into that parking lot, so we'd, there'd need to be some right-of-way acquisition and signal improvements to do that. So it's not, not going to be cheap and not going to be fun when that time comes. The Walgreens and the Safeway side and the, and the Pet Club or Post Office side generally stay the same. The most expansion you see is an additional lane on the southwest corner. And then this is one east and two north, so you've got some improvements there, and the, the big trick will be the power poles on the north side of the road, dealing with those, and some of the ditches in the right, again, the right-of-way.
Frank, will there be a stop sign at that?
At, at, say, this intersection, yes, the, that would probably be the typical, would be, at that point, when the traffic increases, you'd, in my estimation, probably be at a four-way stop at that point. You'd study those warrants, but I don't know if it would warrant a signal or not, we would study that. But I would anticipate, at least in the interim, a four-way stop. And again, this is one where they proposed a roundabout, but with the area you need for a roundabout there, it gets really expensive.
Frank, you've got a lot of bus tra, bus traffic out of the schools coming.
Yeah, so that, this is an area that we really would like to see the improved turn radius and things like that with the bus traffic coming off of the school, because you can kind of see this orange line right here is kind of the existing roadway they have to deal with, so they always have to swing out in the oncoming lane and traffic just to make that turn, so the more ability we can get them to make a right turn, the better.
Yes. Steel plate.
So. So, and the next step is, how much does this cost? And didn't spend much time on this because the costs are just going to be way up there. Some typical numbers you've got for building a three-lane roadway like that are between three and four million dollars, plus the signal work, which could be another two or three hundred thousand dollars, easy. On this stretch of road, depending on if you buy the right-of-way or not, when development comes in, that's part of the zoning ordinance or some of the development, so the right-of-way costs will vary, but it can be in a commercial area as much as ten dollars a square foot. And then the big unknown is the utilities. Water and sewer alone, I estimated to extend those out would be at least half a million dollars, and then you've got to look at power, fiber optics, phone, and gas, and all the relocations associated with that, so it, the price could, could really go up there, so. And then, funding options, the, the town attorney would probably be a better source than me for this, but some of the options you got, of course, are just be able to finance it with general funds. You could try and pass a bond, but then you've got to pay for that bond somehow. There's special improvement districts or impact fee districts that could also be used for that, and those are just kind of generic conversations for how do you pay for, for big road improvements. So, and then I've got other slides that I don't want to go through that are a whole bunch of engineering numbers with the turning movements on the intersection, so I can get as detailed as you want. But in a nutshell, it's basically a three-lane roadway with some improvements at Highway eighty-nine. So, any questions?
Did, if I understand this, we're, we're in good shape with taking into consideration the proposed subdivisions and the proposed projects.
For now.
For now. If we add more to it, that's when we're going to get behind in a hurry.
Right, generally, what we'd look at with the projects is they come on individually. If we don't build this as like one big project, we would look at adding left turn lanes as we need them for the individual projects, as their traffic studies warrant for each project. And then when you start getting those close enough together, you look at combining that into a center turn lane. So the, the trick with this is, you really want to, as the town engineer, I would look to build those improvements and try and place them in the right spot in the right-of-way, so that when you add a left turn bay, that will become the center turn lane eventually, so we're not wasting pavement in the future, and try and build that roadway to where you can just add to it and not have to tear it completely out and rebuild it. So that's the good planning part of this.
Did the, if I remember reading the, the Dow report, one of the recommendations was to, to watch, because now that, that we could get, this will accommodate the, the projects that are on paper now, so we, as a council, need to pay attention to any future projects knowing that if we rezone and we approve more projects, that we're, we're almost inviting having to go to some major funding to redo that intersection.
Right. So the, the impacts of this, as the projects come in, is more expense regionally that you may not be able to tie to an individual project, if that's what you're, is that what the question kind of, kind of is? Yeah?
Yes.
So it's more of a regional impact than a specific impact?
Okay.
Have you done? All right, Frank, um, from what I saw, all this stuff could happen today, and it wouldn't be a bad thing, whether the developments come or not. True?
As far as building the roadway?
Yeah, all the improvements on the road would be a good thing.
Could only help.
Can you please go back to the development slide you had with all of them laid out? Right there. Okay, of all these, you said Village North, did?
They're not.
You talk like it was...
Did, you talk like it was dead?
It's, right now, it is not. The, the owner of that property has not made a formal application for what to do, so they may be changing their mind about...
Okay, and what about Hawks Nest?
Hawks Nest has several, uh, developments that have come through with differing densities, so we're waiting for a formal application to see what they eventually want to do there. They're still looking to do something there, they just haven't decided on what is, works out best for them.
And Hawks Nest Estates?
That's, yeah, the Hawks Nest at Chino Valley and Hawks Nest Estates.
Is that Phase One and Phase Two or something?
Uh, I think the Hawks Nest at Chino Valley was a multifamily, um, zoning, and they're, they're considering whether they really want to do multifamily there or not, and the Hawks Nest Estates is...
And the Heritage Farms?
Single-family. Uh, I think that's a single-family development. Tell you the truth, I don't know too much about that.
Okay. Heritage Place?
That's the commercial subdivision that's already been platted, but not improved at this point.
And then Brook Apartments we know about?
Yes.
So basically, we only know if any of this is going to happen.
That's, yeah, that's what I was trying to say, that, that was all looking scary at one point, but you never know until kind of the rubber hits the road.
But to repeat, all those improvements would be a great benefit, especially at One West and One East, and the sidewalks.
Yes, because what we would do is, when they come in to do their improvements, they would be responsible for those roadway improvements along the frontage of their development.
I'm just saying, if we, even if we had to bite the bullet on our own.
Oh, the, I, I guess, I'm, say, ask the question again, so I know...
I'm saying those improvements would be beneficial at, especially at, well, the highway, because it's always plugged up.
Yes.
One east, where they haven't got any room to turn, and one west.
Yes.
All those benefits would be a, all those would be a great benefit.
Yes, if we, if we built those sections right now, it would, it would improve things, even under current conditions.
I'm not saying let's do it today. I'm just saying it would be a great benefit to our town.
Yeah, even to the current traffic as it is, it would be a big benefit.
That's it.
Okay.
Did you just win the lottery and want to donate a bunch of money to the...
Hell no. If I won the lottery, I wouldn't be here, sir. There'd be a note said, "Bye-bye."
On a good note, I was afraid it would almost need a four- or five-lane section, so it was almost comforting to me to say that we can get away with just three lanes in the foreseeable future on here. Of course, if densities change as developments come in, and according to council's wishes, that could change, but even with all these developments here, you're still looking at only three lanes, which can be looked at as a bright note.
I appreciate your positivity.
Good information.
Thank you very much, Frank, for our information. That's nice to know. We'll have to keep that in the back of our heads when we look at any other development in this area. Okay, let's go on to Item B, Presentation and Discussion Regarding Brook Apartments, a six-point-eight-five acre project generally located approximately fourteen hundred feet west of State Route eighty-nine and six hundred and twenty feet south of West Road Two North at seven forty, West Road One North. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from MR-one multifamily residential one-acre minimum to MR-one multifamily residential one-acre minimum with a PAD or Planned Area Development Overlay to increase the density and allow a hundred and nineteen units on site. Mr. Marbury, are you going to do this one again?
I've, yeah, I think so. This is, Jason couldn't be here, he apologizes, but, uh, he just, the message is that the Brook Apartments has withdrawn their application. So I don't think we need to discuss this item.
When, when did that happen?
Last Friday.
That's right. Yeah. So Cynthia, there is no development there right now?
Well, I should say, it was probably Thursday, but we needed clarification on whether they were going to completely withdraw their application or if they just wanted it tabled, so they actually wrote back on Friday and said they wanted it withdrawn.
So it's my understanding, any new development will accompany a new application.
Questions on this side? Questions? Okay, let's, let's move on. Item C, Review and Discussion Regarding the Draft Twenty-Eighteen Strategic Plan.
Do you mind if I stay here and just go through?
Of course, stay there, yeah.
Joanne, do you mind flipping through my slides when they come up?
There ought to be too many.
There's probably eight. But they're all real fast, so, um, first slide just, uh, talks about the dates that we met, um, in the all-day retreat and then the half-day retreat, um, and then here's today, our study session to discuss the strategic plan. And, um, as you know, through our meetings, we pretty much simplified things, um, in our strategic plan from what was there last year. You have a draft in your council packet. Today, we're just going to talk about, um, the draft, and then next meeting, we'll formally adopt it, um, with any changes that you propose. Next slide. Um, as you might remember, our focus areas are these five areas, the water and water companies, old home manner, industrial park and jobs, roads, maintenance and funding, infrastructure and town utilities, and maintaining a rural community in a business-friendly environment. Kind of fell into those five categories of all our, all your concerns. Next slide. Um, from here, we came up with, or you did, came up with seventeen items for this year for focus areas. I don't know that you want me to read through all these, we can just flip through them if you want. We have, uh, subcommittees for almost every item that is, has been proposed by the council that we'll be working on. We'll try and work most of those through the subcommittees and then bring them back to the full council as they, as they work through the year. Um, we will be working, uh, majority of these do fall under public works, as you can see. Um, you can go to the next slide, too. Um, we are going to be working on a work plan with the Public Works Department and finance to kind of put these into quarters at least, uh, so that we can probably fund the ones that are a higher priority first, and then just kind of wait and see how the budget year goes for the remainder of them. If you want to just hit the last slide, unless anybody has questions about the items that we discussed. Um, went through the minutes quite heavily, and I don't think we missed anything that the council discussed on, uh, through the retreat. And then lastly, we just talked about the, uh, next slide, Joanne, just things that we'll work on in, into the future, um, but we're not going to spend a whole lot of time on some of that, uh, this year, just kind of laying the groundwork for some of it. But we'll report on a quarterly basis, or I will, where we're at on the strategic plan for council. Do you have any questions? That's it. Jack, was that short enough?
Very short.
Well, and I don't have, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say that there are a few of these that are actively being worked on at the time.
Oh, yeah, that we've got, yeah, many of them, actually.
And are moving forward, you know, nicely, so...
Where would some of our, uh, code enforcement and cleanup projects, are, are they in one of these topics?
Um, I'd say it was, I kind of put it more under a focus area, but I didn't actually put it under a project, but that probably should be, especially since, uh, we devoted, you know, we're devoting a staff person to that, um, so I can add that one as...
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's add that as another item.
Uh, and just an FYI, I believe they're doing interviews next week, is that correct? Uh, for code enforcement officers, so we should have that person on board, and then, um, between Jason and Joanne, we'll communicate to the council, the community outreach plan that we'll do that we've talked about, that we want to make sure we did a little bit of a, um, kind of a public splash on what we're going to focus on.
Okay. Questions?
No good?
No. I like the brevity of it, you've, uh, cut it down to where it should be.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what I'll do is I'll add the code enforcement, um, position, the town cleanup. I'll bring it back at the council meeting next week, just for formal adoption by the council.
Good, sounds great.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go on to Item Four, Executive Session. Council May Vote to Recess. The special meeting to hold an executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four-thirty-one oh-three A-three for discussion or consultation for legal advice with the town attorney regarding the acquisition of a portion of the Prescott Water System in pursuit to ARS thirty-eight, four-thirty-one oh-three E-four for discussion or consultation with the town attorney in order to consider the town's position and instruct the town attorney regarding the town's position regarding a contract with the city of Prescott related to the town purchasing a portion of its water distribution system that is subject to negotiations. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
And make a motion to go into executive session. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourning to executive session. Take five.
Just scoot all the way back.
You're locked in there, girl.
And now that I'm home, I need to eat and sleep, and then go to work.
Okay, what are we doing here? Did you look at these?
I did.
Okay, what are we...
Um, just Yavapai Family Advocacy Center, I had no idea they existed until a family member needed them. If, this is an amazing organization, so I will definitely be going, and if somebody wants to go in on a table with me, if anybody's listening.
Do we have a recorder back on?
She's working, she's getting it.
She's getting it, okay.
But I will definitely be supporting, I didn't even know they existed until we needed them. Okay.
No, twenty-fifth.
Yeah, it's at five o'clock.
The twenty-fifth is the mother.
Well, no, the, not the mother, the Yavapai Family Advocacy Center. And who's going to Friends of NRA Dinner?
Who, I don't know.
Who's going to what?
Friends of the NRA Dinner.
Down there?
No, at, at the Wyndham House.
When is that?
August fourth.
I'll have to ask Cindy if she got tickets for that.
We're ready? Uh, we have returned from, uh, executive session, or non-regular session. I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, we're adjourned.
Mayor?
Yes.
Question?
Sure.
For Tuesday's meeting on the twenty-fourth, next Tuesday?
Yeah.